Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have the-- a motion please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Morcese?
Here.
Mrs. Wimmet? Mr. Chalaci?
Here.
Mr. Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales? Mrs. O'Phill?
Here. The board will be meeting in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege. I'm sorry, I didn't finish reading it. Be further resolved that at the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed
I'd like to call the board back into open session. We have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Dr. Giudano?
Here.
Mrs. Maldens?
Here.
Mrs. Narcis?
Here.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes, here.
Zaire?
Here.
Dr. Gales.
Here. Thank you very much to my colleagues for starting the meeting for me. Mrs. Aquino, I heard you did a great job. Please excuse my tardiness. There was a terrible accident on Route 80 and Route 80 was closed. But I'm happy to have made it here safely. Thanks to everyone for coming out in this kind of treacherous weather. We appreciate you being here and we're going to move right along. Mr. Zaire, would you kindly approve the minutes?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes 3.1 and 3.2.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giudano?
Yes.
Mrs. Maldens?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcis?
Yes.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Yes.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes, on 3.1 abstaining on 3.2.
And Dr. Gales?
Uh, I will abstain on both, 3.1 and 3.2.
On both, Dr. Gales?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay, thank you.
Communications and petitions from the board. I would like to share that we received email communications from Mr. Weiss, Howie Weiss, who is the president of the Ed Foundation, which is dated February 21. A letter from former board member John Kemner dated February 27th. And a letter from former board member Rhonda Cohen dated February 27th, vote 2023. Are there any other communications and petitions from the board or the superintendent? Okay, moving right along. Our student liaisons.
Hi, everyone. It's just me today, so I mean unfortunately couldn't be here with the roads and everything. It's pretty rough out there. Um, so this year is quickly flying by and as crazy as it seems, winter sports are already beginning to wind down. Many of our sports teams and athletes were recognized as conference and/or county champions. As many of you know, for the first time ever, our hockey team took home the Haverson Cup, so a big congratulations to them. This is a massive accomplishment. When it comes to our wrestlers, six of them are qualifying for state championships. Coach Smythe is the District Eight Coach of the Year. And in addition to being the District Eight Assistant Coach of the Year, Mr. Fellini was also the Region Two Coach of the Year, so a big congratulations to both of them. And be sure to be on the lookout for spring sports starting on March 16th. In terms of our music department, four students, Brian Perichuk, Silvana Shumbo, Barbara Ashley, and Alexander Masiewicz performed an all-state band this weekend in Atlantic City. And four other students, Leila Blakey, Kayla Marvin, Soya Vehida, and Mary Misaki just got back last night from Cincinnati where they participated in ACDA National Choir. All eight students had to audition for these ensembles and it is a massive deal to see our department recognized on both the state and national level. Our all-district band concert was last Tuesday night and as always, it was a wonderful time. Seeing the elementary school students, the middle school students, and the high school students all performing together is always fantastic because you're truly looking at the past, present, and future of the department. All-District Orchestra was the following Thursday. And if you missed those or just want to check out our wonderful department, be sure to come out to the All-District Choir Concert this Thursday night. And speaking of loving music and supporting our music department, the Spring Musical Mamma Mia is quickly approaching. Tickets went on sale today at 9:00 a.m., so be sure to purchase them because between you and me, they're going pretty fast. The show will be March 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And as the Assistant Director for the production, I can assure you that it is going to be a fantastic time. It's a great show. Our cast is lovely. We have an awesome crew, awesome pit, and I think you all should come out to it. So, March is actually Music in Our Schools Month, so what better way than to come see the show? But Triumph is hosting a variety of events for said month, including karaoke in the library every Friday and Year Two of Teachers Karaoke, which was a massive success last year. You can check out the videos on our Triumph Instagram page. So, other than Triumph, our other clubs do have quite a few things going on, to say the least. Robotics is currently in Disney competing on the national level and we will be hosting another robotics competition, March 11th and 12th at the high school. FBLA is competing in their state competition in Atlantic City at the moment. And Mock Trial just completed their competition season. They received complimentary reviews from the judges after trying their civil case at the Morris County Courthouse. I encourage you all to attend the National Art Honor Society Invitational exhibit on March 7th in the PAC lobby to see our students' amazing talents when it comes to painting, drawing, anything in the visual arts. This week is actually the week of inclusion and both Best Buddies and Unified are hosting a variety of activities to commemorate the occasion, including a faculty unified basketball game tomorrow. Key Club is hosting a family services fundraiser to collect items for families in need. And Team with 3Es is selling ribbons to raise money for Ukraine. Science National Honor Society is helping to judge our elementary school fundraisers. And National English Honor Society is preparing to celebrate Read Across America on March 2nd. GSA's and Leo's Club are teaming up to participate in a bathroom beautification project to help make sure that our bathrooms look as good as the rest of our Nattala facilities. And in great news, after getting canceled last year, our History of the Holocaust students will be taking off later this week for their Germany trip. So best of luck to them and safe travels. When it comes to Student Council, we held a Spirit Week this week, actually the week of Valentine's Day, I apologize, and we sold roses to commemorate the holiday. We made quite a bit of money and the students were extremely receptive to Spirit Week. The junior class held a thank you teacher fundraiser and the senior class is busy finalizing prom and beginning to plan graduation, which is right around the corner. In terms of academics, mid-marking period for the third marking period is actually this Thursday. On March 9th, we will be hosting a mini-college fair and although they're normally during the day, this one is at night, so both students and parents can come out and kind of get started on that college application process. And on the opposite end of the spectrum, there will be a Rising Freshmen Curriculum Fair on March 14th. That's all for me.
Wonderful. Well, any questions?
Outstanding, as always.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Really, thank you.
So many exciting things happening in our district, so thank you very much. Dr. Banja, anything from here?
I'm good.
Fantastic. Let's see here. Mrs. Wehmet, personnel?
We did not meet. We will meet next week.
Breakthrough in Technology?
We did not meet.
Finance and Operations?
Uh, we did not meet. We'll have a nice big meeting on March 6th.
Policy and Governance?
We did not meet. We're planning on meeting in a week or two.
What's up committee reports? Are there any members of the community from the PTA's, PTOs who would like to come up first? Okay, any from the board? Mr. Strzoczy?
Referendary committee, we met this morning. My attendance was Dr. Banja, Mr. Miller, Ms. Libby. Also in attendance was Mrs. Narcis, Mrs. Fenton, Mr. Robinson, and myself. We are architects. We went over the projected projects again and we enlisted the suggestions from all of our participants, including academic suggestions from Dr. Banja. and including academic suggestions from Dr. Banja, facilities suggestions from Mr. Miller, and we are getting financial information from our business administrator. We, today, were able to put into the project in tier one several items. We also put into items in tier two. At the next meeting, which will be next Monday, Ms. Libby will provide us with the tax impact on each of those tiers so we can see where we're at and where we're going to go. We hope we will be meeting each Monday for next few Mondays, but we will have an open meeting for the public on March the twentieth. It'll be at night, we'll broadcast and everything else. We're moving right along, which we have to because we're in a very tight schedule when it comes to this. I had asked a question also today about what is going to be the difference between a twenty-year and a twenty-five-year bond? Will there be a difference in the bond rate? Right now, we're looking at a four-point-five percent bond rate and the one that we're closing out in July of twenty-three was five-point-six, so that helps us quite a bit right there. The problem with the referendums, when we go to the state, we get a pretty good return from the state with the exception of additions. And if we're going to do any additions, they basically give us nothing. So, we'll see what happens, but we're moving right along and it's beginning to take shape and we just need more information and from our consensus, we have to put it together. Also, Dr. Banja indicated that it's a good thing too. She's going to be asking different level staff members to also participate in this for, you know, give us a different look at different levels, elementary, middle, high school, and so forth, buildings and grounds and what have you. So, it was a very, very good meeting today. We'll be meeting again next Monday. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you for that report, Mrs. Strzoczy. For President's Report, nothing from my end and we'll move on to public comments. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene language will not be acceptable.
Good evening. Tammy Groseburn, eighteen Raymar Street in Flanders.
Alicia Khan, nineteen Mountain Avenue in Flanders. And we are both MOHS Trial Secretaries and past Support People of the Year.
And my daughter was Teacher of the Year. All right, first, we would like to thank EMO, our union, for their persistence in representing the secretaries. The sidebar is back on the agenda because of their diligence. Second, while the sidebar, action item number ten point four, is a step in the right direction, it eliminates an increase for our ten-month secretaries. We are both twelve-month. Each of the hard-working ladies at the elementary schools are in the ten-month column. I am confident that their salaries can be adjusted to equate with the twelve-month column. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on agenda items?
Martin Wells, twenty-five Wood, Bud Lake, New Jersey. And it was on agenda items, ten point one, that you're moving money now from tuition to legal fees. Isn't there a better department where you can move legal fees? And as last month, you also moved legal fees out of the Social Security Fund per legal fees. Are those funds overfunded or underfunded?
At this point, we needed to find the money, so for now, we're taking it in those accounts.
Or aren't there other accounts which have more funds?
Those funds were dedicated to an out-of-district student who is no longer with the district, so the funds got freed up.
Okay, all right. And then I see item ten point two. Now, I did put an over request in concerning some correspondence, but I don't know if that's the right reason of why the funds are being returned. Would you like to elaborate on the rationale?
Yeah, the rationale is what we have in the agenda here and I don't know what other public discussion we need to offer.
So you're sticking that this rationale that you have here in writing is what it is. Is that correct?
From what I know, yes. And if you know something different, we can discuss it at a later time.
I do know something different and I know that's not correct. All right. And then the other thing is another parent called in. I don't know if they're here or not and I'm going to just have to let them take care of that. But like I said, fiscal responsibility is a key thing. And like I said, you know, I also want to remind the board, with moving all the money to legal funds, that you still have an opportunity today to terminate the contract of the law firm for them sharing information that shouldn't have been shared. Just want to remind you guys that on a regular basis. Thank you.
Patricia Halter, seventy-five Wood by Nav Bud Lake. I happen to be reviewing the bills list tonight and I'm a little curious. What is a parent subsidy? And I see that we have fifty-seven of them for a total of first installment for thirty-nine thousand, four hundred, nine dollars and forty-seven cents. So I just want to understand, what is a parent subsidy?
It's actually a pretty easy answer. There are two payments made every year. One is in January, one is in June. The parents who are providing, if I get this right, providing transportation is called aid and loo. So, when a parent is aid and loo, they produce what's called a B-6T, which comes from the school district where their child is going to. Typically, it's a private school, it could be a school choice. And so when they're transporting, we pay them by statute, a thousand, twenty-two dollars a year, and it's split into two payments. So when the B-6T is submitted to transportation, that's the confirmation and then we get attendance to confirm the first payment from the school and then we get attendance for the second half to confirm payment. And you'll see the same amount, pretty much the same amount, for the second payment in June. What'll happen is it would get prorated should a child start, obviously before, or leave before the end of June or start after the beginning of school, you'll see prorations done, but it's all backed by statute.
So these are all students that are being schooled out of district?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items? Close the public comments on agenda items. Next up, approval of monthly expenditures. Dr. Giordano?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve monthly expenditures seven point one down to seven point eight.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimann?
Yes, on seven point one, abstain on steps.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gels.
Yes. Personnel action items, Mrs. Weimann.
I make a motion upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move the following personnel action items, eight, one through A.
Two six.
Two zips.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Weimann?
Yes.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Uh, yes, and congratulations to our two employees, Ms. Scotland and Ms. Dur-Macken. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your names, on thirty-six years and twenty-six years, that is a long time.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Dr. Gels.
Yes. Curriculum and Technology, Mrs. Aquino?
I'd like to make a motion upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move action items nine point one and nine point two.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimann?
Yes.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes.
Mrs. Desiree?
Yes.
And Dr. Gels.
Yes. Finance and Operations, Mr. Desiree.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion on the recommendation of the acting superintendent to move action items ten point one through ten point five.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes, but abstain on ten point two and no on ten point four.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Uh, no to ten point one and ten point four and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Weimann?
Yes.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes.
Dr. Gels.
Yes. Administrative action items, Mr. Strzoczy.
Sure. Where's? I'd like to move on the recommendation of the acting superintendent, eleven point one and eleven point two.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Strzoczy?
Yes.
Mr. Desiree?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimann?
Yes.
Dr. Gels.
Yes. Public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be acceptable. We are open for public comments.
I've missed you all. Karen Fumaro, one thirty-three, Flanders, Drake's Dogger. Bear with me, my son asked, "Do you need notes?" I do. Good evening. I have always tried to get my points across and my questions asked in a respectful way without using names while trying to give praise when I feel it is earned. I'm going to attempt to continue that courtesy but apologize ahead of time for what may seem like personal attacks. It is always my intention to gather information and make the most informed decisions with firsthand responses rather than be led by one-sided debates. I want to start by giving praise to brave people for coming forward to shed light on the misbehavior within our district. I'm saddened to read the statement given by Mr. Miller and even sadder that residents would call him a liar, but I am proud of him for standing up and speaking out and am grateful for the continued commitment to our district and children in the face of such treatment. I'm deeply saddened by the claims brought by Miss Troop, but I am proud of her for standing up and speaking out and am grateful for the continued commitment to our district and children in the face of such treatment. I have been saddened by the statements that administrators have made publicly for almost a year, but I am proud of them for standing up and speaking out and for their continued commitment to our district and children in the face of sometimes public ridicule and tariff work environments. Contrary to any individual's allegiance to one side or the other, I think it is important to hear both sides of the story and refrain from dismissing anyone because I'd be willing to bet that it took tremendous strength to come forward and we should all want what's best for our children. I would like to ask the board to conduct a parent information session to clarify to the public how the board operates. I think it is important for the community to understand the chain of command and procedures that lead to board votes and it would go a long way in clearing up where certain blames should fall. Just as an example, in each agenda, it is stated, quote, "Resolved that the Mount Olive Township Board of Education hereby affirms the superintendent's decisions provided in the harassment, intimidation, and bullying HIV report dated," whatever it is, end quote. Does the BOE influence decisions or do they vote on recommendations of the superintendent? Included in that parent session, I think it would be prudent to have our BA explain how and why she shuffles monies from one place to another when necessary. I know there has been an issue taken with money moved from a teacher account to legal recently, ironically concerned by one of the same people that said staff should shut up and do their jobs when they voiced concerns over the last year, but no one was concerned when four times that amount was transferred out of special ed over the summer. It's convenient to point out singular line items when it supports one side of the narrative, but it is the short-sighted and egregious error to let that misinformation influence the decision-making of the public. While I am asking for things, I would also like to ask about the bookkeeping for the dome use fees. When I pulled an Oprah on dome fees, I was not sure how to approach the Oprah because I don't know how the process works. So I could not find the appropriate verbiage to request the information I was seeking. I'll lay out my concerns here now, since it was passive-aggressively mentioned at a meeting after my Oprah request that we have a lovely relationship with Mount Olive Rec giving free use of our fields. I was under the impression that the field use was different than dome use since the dome is supposed to generate income to cover its costs and not be a burden on the taxpayer. For clarification, who is responsible for overseeing the dome use and fee collection? Were there ever discrepancies between fees for certain leagues, namely any leagues that our superintendent gains special permission for his out-of-district children to play on with the children of a sitting board member? Is it possible to amend the current policy to remove the superintendent as the responsible party for fee collection when the superintendent gains special permission to have his children on a team that could create a conflict of interest, either real or perceived? I would also like to say publicly that I am disheartened to read that there were no complaints on our superintendent's record when I brought complaints in December of twenty twenty-one. Admittedly, I should have pushed harder and inquired on the process of filing formal complaints, but make no mistake that my concerns were made known at a December eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting. I would also like to point out that on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, I publicly asked for an outside operational efficiency audit, which provides a comprehensive audit of the district's financial performance and operational endeavors. I had met with our superintendent on December first, twenty twenty-one, and specifically asked about special ed, HIB in the middle school, as well as several other concerns. I was told that we were in complete compliance in special ed and Q-SAC, was given data on HIB, and was told that the district goes through an annual financial operational and performance audit and was given a link, which is currently unavailable on the website because it's under construction or whatever. But at no point in that meeting were any of my concerns met with agreement that there was room to improve or address issues, yet it's asserted in filings that around the same time, concerns were being raised by the same person that tried to quell my concerns. The dismissive conduct in that meeting was also quite alarming. Thankfully, my husband is not easily intimidated. It's also worth noting that around the same time period, several ethics charges were brought against members of our Board of Education, but no one was questioning the ethics of the person that had recently resigned from their own town's Board of Education after a public meeting brought several parents claiming unethical behavior with proof. I would like to know why there is all of a sudden outcry against our board attorney when over a year and a half ago, a parent came forward with concerns about conflict of interest and for almost a year, our administrators have been asking the board to rescind their vote to reinstate the current board attorney. Please don't mistake this question as support for our board attorney as I truly believe that the blunder around suspending our superintendent was an intentional act by our attorney to support our superintendent and cast a shadow on the Board of Education. I believe that there has been a conflicted relationship between the two men for quite some time that has been mutually beneficial and somewhere along the line went sour and now our district is left picking up the pieces. Speaking of that conflicted relationship and a complaint made against our board attorney by our superintendent, it was stated that there was a playbook on how to get rid of a superintendent, namely a playbook that was put in play in Sparta to get rid of their superintendent in which our superintendent is claiming is being used currently to get rid of him. If it's true that such a playbook exists, certainly it is reasonable to assume that a playbook to keep an undeserving superintendent in a district could equally likely exist. I am curious in if in keeping a superintendent playbook, there would include items such as retaining untenured staff that fail at their positions and putting them in higher-paying positions with more authority in the district would be included or bringing concern about the failures of the district after a suspension. Equally curious if creating shady relationships with vendors to execute a personal agenda would also be included in that playbook. After I spoke up last fall at a Board of Education meeting against using COVID funds for an infectious disease tracking system at the high school, which was not passed by vote, I was approached after the meeting and told that due to the loss of that contract, we would lose fifty thousand dollars in donations towards the scoreboard. The deception around the scoreboard is far too deep and dirty to swim in, so I won't go there. But I will say that in light of the new charges that lay out concern about misappropriating taxpayer dollars to cover donations for the scoreboard, that possibly the board should look into other contracts that we have in the district and any donation that was potentially promised to the scoreboard and whether there is a conflict with those vendors and have an outside audit of those contracts and whether they represent the best interest of our district or if they are padded with underlying self-driven agendas. There was a request recently to bring in an outside person to moderate the board. While I think that is a commendable request, I am curious why that request was not made sooner as it's been evident for quite some time that we are a crap show. I wrote crap show, I'm sorry. It was instead made after a news article claimed It was instead made after a news article claimed that an unauthorized investigation was made by the board attorney against said requestor. In that request, it was stated that these dubious tenure charges were retaliatory vendetta. It's unprofessional to make a one-sided statement like tha- like that, especially as a Board of Ed member, since it will influence the public. It also did not speak highly of a Board of Ed member that is willing to take the side of one person over the multitude of administrators and non-administrative staff that have spoken up, even more so after reading the charges. I would also like to point out that it is incredibly unprofessional for an attorney to speak at a public Board of Ed meeting when the Board of Ed members themselves have been so tight-lipped about the situation, so kudos to you guys for keeping your composure. I have tried to support the Board of Ed, and we threw everything to find a truth that I can make sense of. It hasn't always been clear-cut, and it hasn't always been aligned with what I'd like to think of you all as people outside of your elected positions, but I would like to make a plea to the members sitting before us tonight. Please, for the sake of our district and those of us that still have young children and years ahead, take a good, hard look at yourselves and your time on the board, reflect honestly and find it in your heart to remove yourselves, not as an admission of guilt, but to allow the path to better days ahead to appear. While many have served for several years and a lot has been accomplished, there are too many shadows cast just by your presence to move forward with trust and faith. I still have eight years left in this district, and I cannot continue to be hit with curveballs every other week and have the confidence necessary to entrust you with my children. I believe with all of my heart that suspending our superintendent and moving forward with tenure charges is the right thing to do, but I think it is equally necessary to look at the part that board, the board has played in perpetuating bad behavior, benefiting personally or otherwise being compromised, and how that has contributed to the state of our district currently. My closing statement is that as a parent of children in the district and a taxpayer, I would be very disappointed if an agreement were made to pay off the contract of our suspended superintendent. I would much prefer to see this taken to court than to pay for illegal and unbecoming behavior. As always, I thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Gina Pasqual, forty-four Clinton Avenue, Bud Lake. In my hands, I'm holding four years of mathematic workbooks for my two children. There's not one page with one pencil mark. It's a waste of money, it's a waste of resources, it's a waste of space, paper, it's just a lot of waste to me. I don't, I feel terrible throwing them out, I feel terrible recycling them. There just has to be a better solution to, to this. That's my first. My second is, I received letters in the mail from the principal regarding absences for both of my children. In some situations, some parents I know as myself, when one child comes home sick, not feeling well, family of five, it's just a matter of time before it just takes over the home. To take my two kids to the doctor, we took them forty-dollar copay each, just for a piece of paper for an absent, an excused absence, you send them back to school too early, you get phone calls to pick them up from the nurse. I'm worried about CPS coming, knocking at my door, you know, my kids are good kids. They, I can only keep them home when they're sick, one day, two day, three days to recover, another day to recoup. So if, if this can be looked into, uh, there just, there has to be maybe a, a better solution to this as well. Thank you.
So, so I was gonna say, Dr. Banji, we can, we'll toss that softball to you?
Absolutely. Um, with respect to the math workbook, students have multiple ways to complete work that allows us, whether it be online or on paper, so I believe the district has always afforded students multiple ways of doing it, so perhaps in that case that traditionally your child may have more access to internet at home, and maybe, maybe completing that work versus children who may not have that access, that's why they have those workbooks. With reference to your letters, you're not the first parent, um, we actually are in the process of revising those letters to reflect the nuance, right? Really, at the end of the day, that involves a, a parent's decision to send their child to school or not. So our letters are actually in the, in the process of being updated. We met about a week or two ago, so we're finalizing those updated letters because we do recognize excused, unexcused, and the various levels in there, so the letters are going to be updated. That's a little softer tone, but certainly as a school district, we are obligated to sell commu- unsent communication to inform the parents of the totality of absences, but those letters are going to be updated. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Banji.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on public comments? Okay. Close to public comments. Thank you very much, everyone. Is there any old business that the board would like to discuss? Any new business? All right, board comments. Uh, Mrs. Fenton?
Thank you. I wanna make sure that everybody has a safe ride home, because this weather is getting bad out there, but, um, congratulations to hockey, wrestling, the coaches, uh, the music, kids that went to that music festival. I'm just so proud of our, um, school. Um, I'm proud of the administrators. It's, it's a not easy time right now in this school, and I like to see people at least holding their heads up, and we are still making these kids shine and grow, and that is what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zaire.
Uh, just gonna echo what Mrs. Fenton said, uh, congratulations on hockey, the six individual wrestlers moving out to the streets. Um, also to the all-state performance, uh, actually, I even kinda remember from the last meeting, uh, Mr. Perichuk, this was his third time going, which was an unprecedented achievement. Uh, the ACPA, uh, the National Choir, the robotics, um, good luck to them down in Disney. Uh, it's a phenomenal program. Uh, my, my son was involved in, you know, he was talking to kids from China. Congratulations to the FBLA mock trial, um, and I just wanted to say, Mrs. Pasqual, I liked your sweatshirt.
Oh, thank you.
It was, uh, femur area for the BLA.
Stand up.
That's it, sir?
That is all I got.
Thank you very much. Dr. Giordano?
No comment, Mr. President.
What do you have?
Thank you. First, I wanna ditto whatever Mr. Zaire said, because there's so many close in there, and I'm always so proud of our students. Dr. Giordano did bring up, um, Miss Scotland retiring after thirty-six years, and Mr. Makian after twenty-six years, um, good luck on their next adventure. Thank you for everything that you did for our students. I guess I, it's a question, I noticed that we had a bunch of aides that were on the list to be hired with that from our job fair.
No, we went through those already, these are additions.
Ah, nice, good, nice to hear that. And always, our enthusiastic student rep, love hearing her give that, whoever's gonna come after her, they keep on doing that. Yeah, yeah. Also, I wanted to bring the, um, the audience's attention to seven point seven. Uh, Ms. Fumari did tou- touch on that, that the, we affirm the superintendent's decision on HIB incidents. So what it is, is that the superintendent decides on the HIB, and then it is affirmed by the board. So we don't decide on the HIBs, we just affirm his decision of what's on our board.
It may not necessarily be an affirmance either, it could be some other decision.
Perfect, yes, thank you, thank you. Also, I just wanted to point out that, uh, there was an article that was written in the Mount Olive Chronicle today regarding the lawsuit that was filed by Minion Troop. In that article, a former board member claimed that I somehow involved myself in the HIB, which is part of that litigation. I want to state that that is unequivocally untrue. The claim that I somehow influenced how an HIB involving a student, and, and the way the HIB was handled with this student is completely false. I am also aware that the superintendent investigated the matter of this, of my alleged involvement that had taken place, and at that time, Dr. Breton had denied any involvement or pressured by me or that she had ever had any discussion with me regarding that HIB. I am, I will demand an immediate retraction from this former board member of any statements regarding my involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiman. Mrs. Melendez?
Hi, everyone. I would like to echo my fellow, uh, board members in congratulating the hockey, uh, team and the music students that participated, um, representing Mount Olive. Also, good luck to the robotics team, it's something that I have at my heart, robotics team. And also, I would like to mention that another of our students has been recognized by the Mayo, uh, Performing Arts Centers in February twenty twenty-three, uh, the Student of the Month for being outstanding orchestra members. The students are nominated by their teachers and chosen, uh, by the teachers' education department based on their commitment to an excellent, an excellence in the performing arts. Uh, this time, I would like to congratulate the eighth grader, Ahana Mukerji, of the Mount Olive Middle School for being recognized as one of the students for the Mayo Performing Arts Center, February twenty twenty-three, Students of the Month, as an outstanding orchestra member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Narcisse?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to our children, um, across the board, hockey players, wrestling, congrats, hoping to see you guys down in Atlantic City this weekend. Our all-eastern choir, um, candidates, those students traveled to Cincinnati this past week. I was told robotics arrived safely in Florida, and they're doing a wonderful job. I also wanted to say I had the pleasure of, uh, enjoying our district band concert. Looking forward to choir this week, and please come out and see the Mamma Mia show. These students are working their hearts off.
Thank you. Mr. Strologi?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to our, to some clever weather. It's, it's, it's very good of you and everything, and I also like to thank Ms. Fabioa for coming and offering her concerns and her suggestions. And it's what we ask all the people to do, keep coming and let us know what you think. That's how, that's how we make better decisions. We can understand, we only get so much information, but we also learn a lot from the community too, and we can't respond unless we know that you're telling us something so that we can look at and do something about. So, thank you, Karen, for coming, coming forward. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Strologi. Mrs. Aquino?
You know, I just wanna say regardless of where I sit, um, Mrs. Fenton always gets to say everything first. So whether I'm sat next to her or whether I'm sitting over here, she always steals my thunder, so.
Good thing I don't say too much.
Ditto, ditto to Mrs. Fenton's, uh, comments. So, congratulations to all of our students and teachers that are retiring. Um, we, we really have a great district here, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you ver- thank you very much. And finally, I will round us out by saying congratulations to secretaries, to EMO, uh, we finally got that done, and thank you to all of the parents and community members who have come out. We appreciate your support, Dr. Kumara. I really appreciate, uh, your consistent insights for us as a board. And I will say that one of the things that we've been talking about for, what, almost two years now, is doing that, uh, Board of Ed Community Advisory Committee, and I think we really need to get that going, because a lot of people would really benefit from understanding how the board operates, what our role is in the grand scheme of running the district. We are the policymaking body of the district, and we hire and supervise the superintendent. Those are our two biggest functions, but it would really serve the public well if they understood the nuts and bolts of how boards, or how our board operates. Congratulations to our retirees, it's an amazing, amazing feeling. Uh, I, I can't wait for my day. Hopefully, it's coming soon. We have so many amazing things happening in this district that, I mean, you heard it all taking place, and it's amazing. I went to a couple of the concerts this week, and the students' ability, whether it's the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, it's just absolutely extraordinary what our kids can do under the tutelage of our teachers. And I went to the, to the concerts, and I, I just sat back and I closed my eyes and just relaxed, because the music was just so soothing. And the final piece in one of the concerts I went to, it was a combined fifth grade and high school piece, and it was conducted by a savanist jumbo. It was just extraordinary to close out the, the service, the ceremony, so it was really, really nice. We're doing, we're doing very well in terms of our school district, but we do have some issues, and I'm gonna close us out by, uh, just sharing my thoughts on, on one of those issues that is deeply concerning to, to me and, and my board members, I, the fellow board members, and, and we've been really trying to turn the page on the negativity and the divisiveness, because we represent you as taxpayers, our students, and this isn't about self-service, it's about public service. And so it's important that we focus on that and that we get back to that, but there have been a couple of things that have, have taken place recently that, you know, compels me to, as board president, to speak on it. And I'll start off by saying, as, as members of the community may, may be aware, from an article that recently appeared in the Mount Olive Chronicle, Board of Education Member Lisa Narcisse wrote a letter to the New Jersey Department of Education's Office of Fiscal Accountability and Compliance, OFAC, on February nineteenth, asking to appoint a state monitor in our district because she alleges that there are ongoing improprieties related to governance, finance, and personnel. This letter came as a complete shock and a surprise to members of the board and the administration, who were unaware it was sent until we received an Oprah request, an Open Public Records Act request from a local news reporter. And how the news reporter was aware of the letter is still an open question, but I certainly have my suspicions. Ms. Narcisse's letter makes numerous unfounded and unsubstantiated allegations against the board, the administration, and our attorney. Just so the community is aware, the appointment of a state monitor is a drastic measure, which results in the state officially essentially running the entire school district rather than the administration and the Board of Education that you've elected. Despite Mrs. Narcisse's claims, to the contrary, I want to assure everybody that our district is on very solid footing, and we most certainly do not need a state monitor running our school district. To illustrate this point, the school district just underwent our CUSAC evaluation, our Quality Single Accountability Continuum, and we're monitored in the areas of instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. And this CUSAC evaluation is done by the State Department of Education. In fact, last week, our own acting superintendent, Dr. Banji, was asked to present about Mount Olive's accomplishments at the County Superintendent Round Tables Meeting, which was attended by the acting commissioner and her chief of staff. The Mount Olive School District and Dr. Banji received high praise at that meeting for our work. Ms. Narcisse's letter goes on to claim that the October twenty-two actions regarding our current superintendent were taken unilaterally by one board member. However, this is completely untrue. It was a full board decision, which included Ms. Narcisse. I'm constrained by what I can say about the matter, but suffice it to say that a Superior Court judge in Morris County concluded in December of twenty twenty-two that the board did not violate the law in any way. Despite Ms. Narcisse's claims that our board and our district has been hijacked by a few board members and administrators obsessed with ruining someone's career and life, this is also blatantly false. Nobody on this board relishes the situation we find ourselves in. The personal attacks, the newspaper, the radio, our families, our careers, we don't relish this. But we had no choice but to address some very serious allegations in a deliberative and lawful manner. For us to have ignored the situation would have been a serious dereliction of our duties and the oath we swore to uphold. It's unfortunate that there are few individuals in our community who are intent on creating a false narrative on social media and not holding everyone to the same high ethical standards. In fact, Ms. Narcisse references that there have been numerous ethics complaints filed against board members, and that's true. I'm the recipient of a few of them. But they filed, they're filed by just a few people in the community, who then come here and complain about the legal fees. Don't forget. We're confident that many of these cases will be deemed to be unfounded and ultimately dismissed. Unfortunately, what these individuals have done will cost the taxpayers of Mount Olive significant money to litigate, money which will be better spent on the students we're charged with educating, like our special ed students, like our aides. However, despite Mrs. Narcisse's claims to the contrary, the money to fund this litigation will have no impact on teachers' health benefits. It's unfortunate that Mrs. Narcisse has chosen to address her concerns and complaints directly with the state, instead of directly with the state, instead of first discussing them with her fellow board members and the administration. To me, this is a serious breach of the Code of Ethics, which states that board members are not allowed to take private action that can compromise the board, and in my opinion, this is exactly what she's done. As I stated before, most, if not all, of my fellow board members take strong exception to Miss Narcissus's false allegations. This has caused many of us to question her true motives and whether her loyalties lie with the students or other outside influences who are intent on creating division and controversy. I truly hope the community questions this as well. However, as board president, I wish to assure the Mount Olive community that this Board of Education is intent on doing the right thing for taxpayers and our students, who will always be our number one priority. And on that note, I would like to take a motion to adjourn. However, however, we're gonna adjourn to closed session. The board will go into closed session for the purposes of attorney-client privilege and personnel, stating that the reason for confidentiality will be maintained until such confidentiality is no longer warranted. Action, action may be taken. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I just share, school's closed tomorrow.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any objections? We are in closed session. Thank you very much, everyone.